Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August eighteenth meeting of the Temple Terrace City Council. I'd like to remind everybody, including us, that please silence your electronic devices. It's always the person who says that that his phone rings. So before we start tonight, I'd like to just recognize, I think most people in Temple Terrace probably have heard the sad news by now, but we lost one of our wonderful citizens in the community, Ms. Kim Stroh, who passed away. And for those of you who might not have known Kim by name, she was the arts lady who always had the cowboy hat on. She was usually at the council meetings and certainly a very valued part of the fabric of our community. So if you would indulge me, I'd like us to take a moment of silence at the beginning of the meeting in honor of Kim and her family. Thank you. Now, if you would, stand and join me in the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Dear Lord, we come before you tonight in a spirit of gratitude like always. We thank you for the many blessings that you bestow on us individually and together as a community. We thank you for the gift of our families, of our community. We thank you for the tremendous gift of being able to live in a free country and to govern ourselves, and we don't take these gifts for granted. So it's within your name that we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, thank you, everybody. We start tonight with a proclamation of the hundredth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment. If you're like me, you had to have a little reminder what the Nineteenth Amendment was. But this is the one-hundredth anniversary of women gaining the right to vote, and it's pretty hard to imagine for, and I don't think anybody alive today can remember a time. That just seems like such a foreign concept that women wouldn't be allowed to vote, but they fought long and hard for that right, and so it didn't come easily. So the, should I call them forward first? Okay, some people to come forward first are Nicole Sauer from Temple Terrace Juniors, Kate Terry, and Ally Blaine from Temple Terrace Juniorettes. So, welcome, ladies. Thank you for correcting me. So the proclamation is the hundredth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment. Whereas the Nineteenth Amendment recognized the significance of women's suffrage, which when ratified in nineteen twenty affirmed the citizenship of more than twenty-six million women and granted them a mechanism to empower themselves, their families, their communities. And whereas the ratification of the Nineteenth Amendment marked the end of a three-generation struggle to win the right to vote for women. And whereas the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified on August eighteenth, nineteen twenty. And whereas, the year twenty twenty marks the one-hundredth anniversary of the passage of the Nineteenth Amendment and offers an unparalleled opportunity to commemorate a milestone in democracy. Now, I, therefore I, Andy Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby recognize and honor the one-hundredth anniversary of the Nineteenth Amendment granting women the right to vote. So, would you like to say a few words? Yeah, it's a big deal, it is. Ladies, would you like to say a few words?
I will speak.
Please do. Mrs. Donna here.
Don't make them think.
You have the floor.
They're not ready for that. I think it's ironic that today is voting day, election day. So how wonderful that this is the same day. On this day, the Nineteenth Amendment was ratified, and it was the largest enfranchisement of voters in the history of our country, to take an entire gender and bring them into, with voting rights. But we all know now that it had its shortcomings, and it took until nineteen sixty-five, a long time, for the actual Voting Rights Act to give all women, including women of color, the right to vote. So we know that we have come a long way. We now have women who not only get to vote, but they're on the ballot. So that's a major thing. And I stand today as the president of the Women's Club, Temple Terrace Women's Club, and I join with the Juniors and the Juniorettes in accepting, not this as a proclamation, but as a baton, because we are going to continue working until all people recognize that it's up to them to be committed to be educated voters and to vote. So it's five after six. If you're listening to this and you haven't voted, the polls are still open. Turn off your TV and go vote. So we would like to invite all the women in the room to join us for the photo op.
They're not joining.
Fill up the whole place.
You gotta get close.
Talking about a family of roast on here.
Name me over here on the side. I'm gonna have to take another name, guys.
Make sure you smile.
You guys can hear Brooke me out, maybe.
Okay, we're gonna take several, so don't move anyone. Thank you.
We could've moved. We could've moved. He said, "Don't move." No, I meant, he said, "Don't move."
Oh, that's true.
I was holding it still. I was like, "Why?"
We had more than half the room up here.
I know. Got another fun one to do here. So, Alicia Baker. Hello, Alicia.
How are you?
I am good. How are you?
Good.
So I have a certificate of recognition here, Charles, but I don't have the story. Do you want to tell the story?
Oh, where's the? I was, it was around, on Sunday, and I was driving down fifty-six, and I got to Bush and noticed, I saw a lady on the floor doing CPR on a gentleman, and I decided to get out of the car to see if I could assist. I did, because they were doing CPR wrong, so I was able to tell them that they were doing it wrong and to help them do it right. I stayed there until EMS got there, and when they got there, the guy was up and he was alert, and so that's the story, that I stopped to help somebody in need.
Well, that's the short version. That's the short version. Alicia's being a little modest here, because we've all read the longer version, and for the public, there's a little more to it than that. And that person probably would not be walking around alive today editing up and for, is it Alicia or Alicia?
Alicia.
Alicia, okay. And that person would not be alive today. So you're being a little modest in telling the story, but, you know, folks, this is just, at last meeting, we talked about the sanitation workers, and the meeting before that, we talked about library. I mean, we could go on and on. We could spend all of our time just talking about the wonderful things our employees do. And so that's what makes Temple Terrace what it is. That's what makes it different, and thank you so much.
This is a lot easier. I don't have to stand on the chair. We are gonna take a few of those, so don't move. How about, right? Hold it, yeah.
Oh.
There you go. There we go, okay.
Sorry about that.
Shoot those again. One more, guys. Perfect. Thank you.
Fogging up here. Presentations, we have none. Board appointments, we have none. The next item is approval of the July thirtieth, twenty twenty special city council meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the minutes of the July thirtieth special city council meeting? If not, all in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. No nays. Minutes are approved. Next item is approval of the August fourth regular meeting of the city council. Motion and a second. Any discussion of corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. A three-minute time limit will be imposed on all comments from the public. We ask that speakers come to the podium and state their name and city of residence. During public comment on items not on the agenda, the city manager and directors in attendance do make note of these items. And residents, I'd like to assure all the residents that all of your comments are taken seriously and will be followed up on. As of now, I have one request to address the council from Mrs. Annette Rennie. Mrs. Rennie, you have the floor. Welcome.
Hello. Annette Rennie, ninety-five twelve Woodland Ridge Drive. I'd like to ask council, and I want to make it clear, this is not about waste management, because we don't, there couldn't be any better. The guys are great. But there's a lack of transparency in this city, and it seems like city council gets something at the last minute, and then it's passed on to the citizens, and the citizens aren't made aware. I mean, the tickets on the garbage cans, the new garbage trucks that are gonna be equipped, which is probably a very good idea, so it doesn't hurt the jump, the men who are out on the street, but still, nobody's aware, and the recycle. We still have people putting glass and plastic because they weren't informed, so it's a lack of transparency. Where is it coming from? Why don't you get it till the last minute? Why don't we hear about it? And then I have to say, the bins, the bin placements are terrible. I mean, at the end, my subdivision is set in an easement that you have to drive through the mud, which I'm not gonna do. I'll just throw in the trash. But it needs to be transparent. We pay taxes. You people are in charge, and whoever informs you needs to inform you far, far prior to it actually happening. So I ask that you look into this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. I don't have any other forms. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council? Okay, seeing none. Next section is communications and petitions. We don't have any. We have nothing on the consent agenda. We do have some public hearings and ordinances and resolutions. Next item is a resolution approving the emergency expenses associated with the utility main pipeline break. Finance Director Lynn Boswell will explain. Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and members of city council. I do remember that we had informed the city manager, and I remember that there was a meeting in which I could swear he told you, and I couldn't find it, because I believe it was in the city manager's report. So this is the resolution that's post-after the emergency that had occurred on April nineteenth. There wasn't anything that could be done about that internally, and that is why you have before you the resolution to approve the emergency repairs that had to be done for this pipeline break.
Is that it?
That's it.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, do you have any questions? Not discussion yet, just questions at this point. Any questions for Mrs. Boswell? Okay, very good. I have a question. So these funds for this, are these encumbered funds from last year's budget, or are they coming out of the current year budget?
Part of it, because we did get a bill in two thousand nineteen fiscal year. Part of that came out of the already audited and closed books of two thousand nineteen. This one also, since it overlaps the year, then allows us to be able to go ahead, and it does encumber it for this fiscal year. When I had this conversation, when this first happened, I had spoken both with Nate and Troy, and looking at their capital budget, looking at where the money was going to come from, I remembered that we went ahead and pushed back or pushed forward one of the projects, and that was supposed to be one of these projects to fix in the future. We just went ahead and switched it and pushed that one forward.
Okay, I'm not sure I understand the answer, though. Is the money coming out of the current fiscal year, or last fiscal year, or a mixture?
Mixture.
A mixture?
Yes.
How much is coming out of the current? Okay, how much?
It's an inhabit in April. We first some expenses in nineteen. The project got finished after the Denver, of nineteen, which is actually a function here. So there's funds coming out of both.
It's a mixture. Okay, that's, that was the question.
And on the resolution, if I'm not mistaken, it was Enviro Waste first. Is that correct? We did the pumping?
Yes.
So in two thousand nineteen, Enviro Waste, Enviro Waste had a hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-five for fiscal year nineteen. And then for the Kimmons Contracting Corporation, it is this fiscal year, two hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and eighteen.
Okay.
To finish the projects.
Okay. Other, any other questions? Seeing none, I entertain a motion, if acceptable.
I move to approve the resolution approving emergency expenses associated with a utility main pipeline break.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? No nays, the resolution passes. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee revenue. Police Captain Jacob Carlisle will explain. Welcome, Captain.
Thanks, sir. Much appreciated. Mayor Ross, members of city council, Jacob Carlisle, Temple Terrace Police Department. I'm here this evening to discuss an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee renewal. It is recommended that city council adopt a resolution approving the interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County concerning the distribution of boat registration fee revenue in return for the continued assignment of the marine law enforcement officer within the city during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. In accordance with Florida law, Hillsborough County imposes an annual registration fee on all vessels that exceed twelve feet in length and are operated or stored in the county. Since nineteen ninety-three, the city has operated under an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County for the shared distribution of these funds. The Temple Terrace Police Department Marine unit routinely patrols and enforces boating safety and other related regulations on the Hillsborough River. As specified in the agreement, the city's sixty thousand dollar funding allocation will be used towards the salary and benefits for one full-time police officer assigned to marine law enforcement duties during the upcoming fiscal year. The agreement does not, does allow for the temporary assignment of the marine officer to other duties as needed during law enforcement emergencies. I'll stand for any questioning.
Before we, questions, are there any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions for Captain? I have one. I don't know if you'll know the answer. If you don't know, that's fine, but how often is this adjusted? It seems like it's been sixty thousand dollars for a while, and, you know, the salaries go up like everything else. Fuel, everything goes up. Is this ever routinely evaluated, or is it just sixty thousand dollars all the time?
I've been here for nineteen years now, and it's routinely been that number.
We'll look into that.
That's fine, okay. If there are no other questions, I'll entertain a motion approving the interlocal agreement.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No nays? It's approved. Thank you very much, Captain. Next item is a resolution approving Hampton Oaks Non-Advalorem Assessment for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-One. Finance Director Lynn Boswell. See, you could've saved a little time there and just had her do these back-to-back.
We need to get Captain out of here.
Welcome back, Ms. Boswell.
Thank you. Mayor, members of city council, bring before your resolution to approve the non-advalorem assessment to Hampton Oaks subdivision for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. This was at the request of the Hampton Oaks Homeowners Association on September sixteen, two thousand fourteen, and it applies an assessment of two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for each of the, each forty-three single-family residential parcels. The total assessment for the entire area is eleven thousand ninety-four.
Good. Any members of the public that wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions? No questions?
No.
If there are no questions, I'd entertain a motion if it's acceptable.
I move to approve a resolution approving Hampton Oaks Non-Advalorem Assessment for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, Twenty-One.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Resolution passes. Thank you again, Ms. Boswell. Next item is a resolution approving SPR two zero dash zero five, which is this final site plan for Site D Retail Center at Woodstork. Senior Planner Gus Carpus will explain. Welcome, Mr. Carpus.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Okay, yeah, so what do you have before you tonight? I do have a, there we go, a slideshow for your, as the mayor said, you have SPR twenty dash zero five, which is a final site plan for Woodstork Site D Retail Center. The owner is JT Enterprises Two LLC, and the applicant who is here is Rail Engineering and Survey, Surveying LLC. Oops. Okay, so the location is an unaddressed property located south of Fletcher Road and east of Telecon Drive. It's up there by the new racetrack and Starbucks, and they're building the USF Credit Union up there. The proposed use is to construct a six thousand four hundred and seven square foot multi-tenant structure, which will house three different tenants, and it's got about one point zero nine acres. You'll see on the site plan here, on the east side, you have some parking spaces that bleed on, on the east side to the USF Credit Union site. There's a parking agreements, which I included on your staff report, that the council previously approved, where the USF Credit Union has allowed them to park on their site. And with that, they make their parking requirement. So some of the building elevations here, the one on the left shows the interior build-out. You can kind of see where the three units would be. The second one is facing south from Fletcher, so you've got basically the front elevation. And then you got looking southeast from Fletcher Avenue, another one looking southwest from Fletcher Avenue. Well, actually, I want to go back to the site plan. One thing I didn't point out is that you see on the east side also is where one of the, one of the tenants will be a drive-through restaurant, and then the retail will be in the center, and then there'll be a restaurant on the other side. So on the east side of the building is where they're gonna have their drive-through portion. Sorry, I forgot to mention that earlier. And then here's their signage. Now, the signage was all approved as part of the original plat of seven-eight Telecom Park, or Tampa Telecom Park plat, which initially created this parcel. So the signage is uniform throughout. Staff recommends that the council approve the resolution for the final site plan, twenty dash zero five, subject to any conditions that the council may want to add. That, like I say, the applicant is here. If you have any questions for myself or the applicant, we're here to answer them.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Carpus. Is there any, are there any members of the public who wish to provide comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions for staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, if, well, does the applicant want to speak to this, or? Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Alan Rail with Rail Engineering and Surveying. We've been the consulting engineer for all of the development of Lot Seven A so far, the master infrastructure, the Starbucks, the USF site, the Site D. And I want to tell you, I've done this for a lot of years in a lot of jurisdictions, and we really love working with the city of Temple Terrace. It's just a pleasure to work with the staff and to do these, do our projects in the city. And I'll answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions, council members? Good. Thank you very much. Welcome to Temple Terrace. Welcome back to Temple Terrace. So if acceptable, council members, I'll entertain a motion approving SPR two zero dash zero five.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move staff recommendation.
Motion and a second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Motion passes. Next item is a resolution warning the design for the rehabilitation of Bridgeford Oaks Sanitary Sewer Lift Station. Public Works Director of Utilities Troy Tinch will explain.
I have cleaning to do. Thank you, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Tinch.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, city council. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval of funding for the design to rehabilitate the Bridgeford Oak Lift Station. Bridgeford Oaks Lift Station is a small lift station located near the entrance of the Bridgeford Oaks subdivision, which is located over off of Morris Road, near the intersection of Harney. It's a rather small lift station in itself. It was designed and built in two thousand, so it has reached the end of its expected life expectancy, design life. So we're looking to upgrade that station. We've been having some issues as of late regarding clogging associated with grease and rags within that lift station. So the new design is proposing to upgrade the pump itself, make it a little more of an aggressive pump, like a monster pump, to kind of munch up that material, to get it in, back into solution, to pump it on down the line. In addition, we'll be increasing slightly the horsepower on those motors to make sure that we can reach the desired force that we need to pump that affluent out of the lift station itself, into the force main, and on down the line, as well as, we're all aware, we're experiencing some development in that area, so we'll make sure that those lift stations are meeting the needs of that community, and will continue so as things progress. So with that said, staff recommends the city council approve the expenditure of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents for the design to rehabilitate the Bridgeford Oaks Lift Station. The proposed work will be authorized as a task work order under the existing General Professional Services Agreement between the city and Kenley Horn. Funding for this effort has been budgeted in the Water and Sewer Utility Renewal Fund with an account number four three zero dash three eight nine nine dash five three five point six three dash three three. I'll stand for questions if any.
Very good. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member question. Mr. Schistler, you?
Yes, thank you, Troy. Good presentation. Question, though, what will be the total overall rehabilitation cost for your, this is part of it?
That's correct. So this is the design element. This also carries over into construction, construction oversight, and we anticipate the construction, the probable cost of construction to be somewhere around two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. It is budgeted in the upcoming fiscal year to have that station rehabilitated, so the money has been not officially approved, but it is in the budget that you are currently reviewing. So grand total's gonna be about two hundred and seventy-five, two hundred and seventy, two hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Good question. Thank you. Other questions, council members? Yes, Ms. Donna, here, you're right.
So what's the timeline? Because those homes are now inhabited.
Yeah, the subdivision's been there for over twenty years. So the timeline will be about three- So the timeline will be about three to four months for design, and then we hope to go quickly into construction. The actual construction effort will likely take less than two weeks. It's a small station, but they have to get all the material pulled together, so that often takes several months to get the piping, the infrastructure they need to bring on-site. So once they actually start, they're in and out quite quickly. So grand total, we're probably looking at, say, 10, 10 months for them, design, initiation of the design to hopefully completion of construction.
What's the capacity for growth once this is repaired?
Well, it's, the station itself only serves that community, only the Bridgeford Oaks community. So I believe there's 40-some homes that are within that community, so there's no proposed additional growth within that area. There will be no additional growth that will be entering into the station as far as additional affluent. It just more or less, we want to make sure we upgrade that system, so as we do see additional growth in the area, and we start to see some additional pressures in those force mains, that this station will continue to function.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, council members? I don't have any. If it's acceptable, entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
To approve the resolution for warning design rehabilitation of Breckinix Sanitary Sewer Lift Station.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tinch. Last item on the agenda is a resolution approving the modification of an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County titled Traffic Control Signal Maintenance. Public Works Director of Operations and Maintenance Ray LeBlanc will explain. Mr. LeBlanc, welcome. Make sure he gets it clean.
He got it. Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a resolution seeking approval to modify its current agreement with Hillsborough County and Temple Terrace for a traffic control signal maintenance agreement. The short story is, a while back, we approached Hillsborough County for the maintenance we were doing on Bullard Parkway from 56 east to Harney Road. We never got compensated for that in any way, shape, or form, for nothing. Their response was to, if we modify the traffic signal control maintenance agreement, put it in there, we can reimburse you for that. So we have that modified now, and their instructions were, if council passes it here, we send it along to them, and we will seek reimbursement, we can get reimbursement. Right now, the attachment is $45,661.50 that we've never got. So we are seeking approval for that, so we can get paid for the work we're doing.
Good. Are there members of the public who'd like to comment on this item? Good, council member, questions? Mrs. Donahue, you have...
Will this be an annual?
It's annual. We submit invoicing by February 1st. Right now, the annual reimbursement would be $45,661.50. You see the folks on Bullard Parkway all the time? This is for ground-level landscaping, no tree trimming, no sidewalk repairs, just the basic stuff, picking up trash. We're there three days a week, and we did a pretty forensic study on our cost, and we have it. So we invoice them by February 1st every year, and they will send us a check.
Great.
Good, Mr. Sisler.
This will be a variable, year to year, this is variable year to year, correct, or is this going to be a static charge? The 46, the 45, 661?
That's where it is now. Charles, can you answer?
It's a standard charge. Okay. I mean, we did, we, certainly for our costs. That's why we're interested. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Entertained, I would entertain a motion if it's acceptable to approve the modification of an interlocal agreement with Hillsborough County regarding traffic control signal maintenance.
Move to approve. Staff recommendation.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? I would just like to say one thing, and that is, I'd like to thank, in Hillsborough County, Ms. Wise and the Board of Commissioners for approving this and being willing to do that. We've been doing the maintenance on this stretch of road for years.
They've been very cooperative. We met with them at Public Works, and they said, "Tell us what you want to do."
Right.
And they said it'll take us a while to get through it, but we got through it, and we know what the help from the city manager. We don't have a...
Hillsborough County's been, you know, at times, we know we have our differences, which are normal, but they've been very good to us in many ways, the Boys and Girls Club, this agreement, they've been the irrigation project.
This way, in and out of the city and the redevelopment, it makes sense to keep doing it.
I'd just like to add some balance to this. You know, we complain sometimes about our relationship at times, but they've also been very good to us at times, so. Very good. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No nays? Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Council business? Any carryover council business?
Not carryover.
Oh, okay. I have one question, and I think this is the right time. If not, I'll bring it up on the new business. I have a question regarding the sanitation presentation that I know is still upcoming soon. Because of our limited capacity here, for those people watching on TV, we do have vacant seats, by the way, but not a lot. Are we going to have, set up the ability for public comment, for people to phone in somehow, or so that we can, like the VOCC where they can? Because we're likely to have a lot of questions, a lot of input.
We have every intention of opening us up to the general public if they want to call in, yes.
We're going to have a call-in capability?
We'll send it out that way, yes.
Okay, good, good, good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. That's all I have for council business. Anybody? New business? Board reports? Mr. Sisler?
Yeah. I really don't know how to get into this, except just go ahead and jump in. There have been numerous complaints, if you will, over the last several months of the, what appears to be an inability, inability to communicate with the public on various sundry issues and items. I've spoken to numerous individuals regarding that, and I've tried to cover all the age groups and the demographics as to how, what are we doing? What are we doing wrong? What are we doing right? And it looks like there are some things that we're doing right, but it looks like there might be some things that we could do differently, maybe go further. Now, to the city staff, believe me, I've been, I've been in your situation when I was working. Well, it's not right. You need to do it better. Well, I'm not that type of person to say you need to do it better without some kind of suggestion and willing to help to make any improvements that need to be made. So I would like to see us, and I don't want to go out and hire a company like we did several years ago, to try and increase our social media awareness. But, you know, we have information that we need to get out to the public, and for whatever reason, it's not getting out there, okay? I even have family members who looked at me like I had six heads when I told them, "Didn't you get the text alert for the, for this or that?" And they said, "No, we knew nothing about it." Well, it's on the website. Why don't they go look for it? So I, I've been, I've been asking for some suggestions on things that we can do, and I don't want to take council time, but I'd like to see us put together, A, and approach, we don't have a newspaper anymore that we can put things out, it's just not published on a daily basis, and there's no local branch that unless there's a disaster, it's very difficult to get any positive information out about the city. And I know that Lori, and I know she's not here, so I'm not picking on her, she shouldn't go on vacation like that, but we need to do better, we need to do more, even if it's something as simple as Instagram accounts or Twitter. We, some age groups shudder over the terminology, but that's the way we're going to reach out to our younger demographic, the 18 to 40, as I'm told. You're going to have to go through Twitter, you're going to have to go through Instagram. Even, even offer, we offer YouTube, but even if Brian could strip out the audio, post it somewhere as a podcast, there's people who will listen to the meetings, but not necessarily watch the meetings, because it takes them an inordinate amount of time, but they could be listening to while they're driving or something like that. We may not get a huge following, but if we get anybody, it's better than some of the things that we've got now. So I just would like to, and I'd be willing to work with people, or get together a group of citizens that would be willing to volunteer and put their money where their mouths are in order to build up the communications that we do have and get it towards it's more dynamic and hitting more people, because, you know, I think we have 1,200 Twitter followers, and I think we have about 3,000 who get the email. We got 17,000 residences, I believe, or 15,000 residences in, within the City of Temple Terrace, and issues like the garbage, issues like the recycling, issues, budget review, the whole nine yards. We could put this information out there, we might, we may, we may, we may not get more community input, but at least nobody could get back and say, "Well, we didn't know anything about it." I don't know if we can tap all the resources that we have, or that are necessary to reach everybody, but, you know, this, it's, we're relatively limited in what we can do, but there are things that we can try, and I would just like to see us go forward with that and try to build up, and it would improve the transparency issues that people think that are, are missing and so forth, and hopefully, maybe it'll fix some of these things. I'd like to see if we could do something further with that.
Thank you. Other new business or comments on that?
Some comments on that. I guess for us to want to move forward, we as a group have to kind of decide that's what we want to do. Do we want to discuss that tonight? I support the effort, but we have to give, if we're going to give direction to staff, we have to kind of be in agreement. So...
Ms. Donahue?
Yeah, the complaints I had were that, when asked, "Where did you tell this information?" Everything was technological, and these were people who don't go to websites, they don't have Facebook, they don't get email. And so when they saw a green bin out front, they were like, "Oh, they started." So they reacted, and then it was only cardboard. Okay. So I don't know, other than acting like the church bulletin, you know, there are people, your church, all our churches have websites, and they tell us all kinds of great things, but people take those bulletins home because they're printed. I don't know where we would distribute them, but I think that's something we might need to, something like the Friday Report that we all get, might not be a bad idea for it to be printed and put in specific locations, the library, the rec center, public places. We can't do the work of the Tribune, or the Times, or the Old Beacon, which is how we all got our news way in the, back in the day, and it's a shame, because that's what keeps, I mean, Ms. Rennie's point was exactly right. How is she supposed to know this stuff? Luckily, we did use the marquees a couple of times when we first started, but it was because so many people had complained. So it's a, it's a scratch-your-head situation, because we can't go in the business of creating a newspaper, but, but we have to think of, what is that one? We've got all these things going, but they're all connected to the computer, and I think the ones who are not aware are the ones who are not connected to the computer, and that's a lot of people. That's a lot of people. So I think, I'm glad you brought it up. I don't know how we direct staff now to do something different. I don't know what that different thing is, but I agree with you that we need to put our heads together and find out. There's got to be one more thing we're missing. You know, we do have, what, La Gaceta and the Sentinel, those are the, and the Times. Those are our three newspapers, but they're expensive. They're very expensive. I mean, you can ask Ms. Mooney, just to put in our little notices, takes up a big chunk of our budget. So I don't know what the answer is, but thank you for bringing it up.
I don't know either. I hear this a lot, we all hear this a lot, but I oftentimes hear it from people when I, when I ask them what steps they've taken to, to...
Sure.
You know, they say, "Well, I don't know anything that's going on in the city," and I ask, "Well, what steps have you taken to find out?" I mean, it's all over the website, it's all over Facebook, it's all over Twitter, it's all over, what steps have you taken? And most of the time, when I get down to the end of the conversation, they haven't taken any, and I don't know, I mean, you expect the city's going to knock on your door and tell you everything that's going on, it's kind of unrealistic. I suppose we could publish periodically maybe a printed newsletter, and then for those people not connected with the city, if they want to receive that in the mail, maybe we charge them a small amount to offset the cost of doing that, the printing and the postage, and you have to opt into that, perhaps, that's a way. But I don't, I don't know the answer to that either. I mean, we could probably publish a bulletin, like a monthly, take, take what Lori's already producing, put it on a written page and mail it, and charge people a small service fee to offset the cost of that. We could, we could do that.
Well, we have the water bill.
Yeah, the water bill doesn't reach, because like my neighborhood's on Tampa Water, so that, that's not 100% fit.
It's not.
And it's not timely.
It's about our only vehicle that's mailed.
But it's still not timely.
Yeah, it's not timely. I know.
It's not in three billing cycles as well, so you may have something this week, it misses, that, for, sent out.
Yeah.
Doesn't pick it up in the next two because, because of timing.
Right.
But you could subscribe to a city newsletter, and if you get it electronically, it's free. If you get it printed and mailed to your house, it costs.
I mean, I understand, utility bills, I did this once before, utility bills only go out, they all go out, but 60% of people, 20% of the people pay online, so there's, there's a tremendous amount of people that cannot...
That's the only thing we have, right? That's mailed?
I mean, we are going through this discussion painstakingly with my staff, especially with the new garbage stuff coming up, and there's a section here that is a cat to the new program, it's called messaging, on how we anticipate getting this, this word out. So I, you know, usually the people that are complaining and asking, "Well, are you signed up for EVLabs? Or you signed up for Twitter? Are you signed up for Facebook? No, I'm not signed up for any of that." Point well taken, that not everybody's tied into this technology issue. And I think most of our commitment here is staying on the technology side, trying to get things printed and out on social media. To that point, do we have Twitter, do we have a Twitter account?
Do we have an Instagram account?
I don't know the answer.
Oh, the Twitter account, I'm sorry. Twitter hasn't been used since 2019, I believe, but do we have an Instagram account? Because, I mean, I got, I was told in no uncertain terms, we don't use Facebook, we
use, we use Instagram. I know that we have Facebook, and you don't know what that is. That's the only one I know, is Facebook. I don't, I don't want, I don't want to, you know, bog us down with that.
Mr. Chambers had...
Yes, technology, quite honestly, I don't, I don't go on Facebook, so I don't give any information.
Mr. Chambers, you heard...
I was just going to say, a lot of our issues are very timely, and the agenda is prepared, we get it on, you know, Wednesday or most likely Thursday. The public, we get it first, then the public gets it, and there's only a few days for them to read it and such, and get the information out. So the water bill or anything mailed probably wouldn't get out. I don't know the, any of the answers, but I think, at least I would like us just to, you know, rack our brains again at some time, one of your staff meetings or something, just, just to know it's out there.
Our latest attempt that we've added is a dedicated phone line for people that don't have computers, like everybody has a phone, and I discuss that, and just trying to fill another, another hole.
That might be it.
Trying to communicate to people.
It's tough.
We're really trying to communicate this stuff out, but it doesn't, it doesn't get out all the time. We do the same thing. I didn't know anything about it. It's like, we've all been posting it, I mean, we put posters at library and the rec center where we know people visit. Certainly, that doesn't be much good now with the reduced visitation that we have there, but I mean, we've even gone to that extent when city halls open, put, you know, a poster there at the, at the front of a easel. So we do try. If we've got some other suggestions, I'm, I'm all for hearing.
I like the phone idea.
And the phone idea is one of those that we're starting for the, for the, for the recent...
That goes to them, and it needs to be things like, there will be no pickup on Friday, you know, that kind of stuff, because that's what they're complaining about.
You mean like a robo-call?
It's the, the robo-type call. I mean, you just leave a message. You don't have to get, nobody has to pick up. You just, it's, it's the reverse.
Quite honestly, I mean, just to be candid here with you, I mean, people complain that the garbage is picked up on Friday because it's a holiday. I don't know how to answer that other... that other, really. I mean, it's a national holiday. You know, the city's not going to be working and picking up garbage. There is a routine that we follow when we don't have, when we observe a, a holiday on Friday and when we observe a holiday on Monday.
I know.
I mean, the pickup just gets pushed back. I, I don't get a notice from the county that they're doing that. It's kind of.
Yeah.
Mr. Chalora has.
Understood.
Mr. Chalora, you're ready?
You know, I, I've been here a long time and I just think the city needs to look at how to properly structure the positions. I was here, we never even had a PIO officer. The city manager was overwhelmed. And then we brought in redevelopment director and Mr. Polly was doing that. And then we brought in a PIO officer, which is exactly public information officer. That's the title, public information. So that person should be the one guiding us on all this, not us. That's the expert. If they can do it, great. If not, find somebody that can. But we're sitting here trying to spin our, well, we have a person that does that. Then take us to the next level. Not us. We have that title, public information officer. We're talking about public information. Yes, we do need to do a better job informing people when the city was not picking up yard waste. You know, we live and learn. The city should notify people well in advance, say, hey, we're not going to be picking up yard waste. Then nobody would yell and scream. They wouldn't have big piles outside. But I'm sitting here listening to this and I'm like, no, that's why we created that position many years ago. The public information officer does exactly that. And that person should be telling us what to do and how to do it. Times are changing, there's Twitter, there's Facebook. I get all that. And that's why we have experts in those fields. So I would suggest we look within, because we have those positions, maybe they need to be restructured. You know, instead of, you know, sending out a regular little circulator, maybe that individual needs to be looking at, how do we reach out to the citizens? If we're going to change something, that's that person's job. Hey, this is going into effect in two weeks. We better get on the ball now. So I, I'm sitting here saying, I don't want to create another expense. We already have that expense in our city. Put that person to work or that position to work on how it's supposed to. And that's why we created that position. The, the title speaks for itself. Thank you.
Would you, counsel, would you be agreeable? Now, I know our PIO is on vacation right now, so this is not, this could take a little time. Would you like to have our PIO come and give us a bit of a presentation on, at a meeting where we're not loaded up with, our agenda's a little light, as to what she does, what the opportunities are to improve, what's effective, what she doesn't think is effective? Would that be worth our time to?
I think so.
Mr. Stevenson, is that something that we could accomplish in the next, pick, pick a meeting when our agenda is fairly light?
I, I tell you this, again, part of, part of the reason why you're not hearing the residential solid waste program this evening is that Lori's on vacation this week. And I wanted her to be able to explain to counsel how we're going to message this, this program out. So maybe that would be the opportunity while she's explaining how we're messaging the program. It really shouldn't be any different for anything that we do. I mean, the message should be the same, the same mechanism. You don't want to put out Facebook one week and then put out Twitter the next week. So some consistency. And the reason that, that, again, with some other stuff that was going on, we postponed the, the presentation until next meeting was so she can be here to explain, because you know, we hear this as well. And we just, you know, we just kind of beat our heads on the wall sometime going, gosh, what else, what else can we do? I mean, other than, you know, skywriting this stuff in, 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 over, over town. I, we keep getting.
Well, it seems like a good, a little time set aside during a meeting where she can stand up and we can have a little dialogue might help to, but I mean, I've worked every corner of this county in my career. And in every corner of this county, you got the same thing. This is not a Temple Terrace thing. This is a people thing. And Tampa has the same problem. Hillsborough County has the same problem. Sheriff's Office has the same, now to one extent, or Plant City's got the same issue. This is not a, so maybe if we could have her come and say, these are what, things that we're doing.
We can do that. She's actually part of the program to explain this thing. And really, that can certainly morph into our conversation of what else we can do.
Well, let's, let's take that separate from the sanitation. Let's deal with the sanitation. That's going to be enough. Let's deal with this.
I know, but part of the sanitation presentation that we're going to give you next meeting is messaging this thing and getting the word out. Okay? So that really is a template, if you would, on what we should be doing for everything. Because we've sat, literally sat down and said, all right, who, how do we contact these people? How do we contact these people? How do we contact?
Yeah, I just don't want the sanitation thing to get morphed into a, now we're going to talk about the city's marketing strategies. And we're going, I mean, that, that, those are, they're connected, but they're separate.
We, we could, we could set it up that way.
Okay. They're good? Is that satisfactory, Mr. Schuster?
And I wasn't trying to apply any better.
No, I don't think it was taken that way. Any other new business, council members? I, I have one thing just to give you a heads up to think about. City manager's contract is up for renewal February 26th. And so these things take time. And so my thoughts were at a upcoming council meeting to make this an agenda item for us to have discussion about what direction you guys want to go in. Because somebody's got to, we either got to sit down and negotiate a renewal, or we have to figure out where we're going. So I don't want to wait until November to do that. I want to do that. I don't want to have the discussion now. I just wanted to, my proposal was to put it on the agenda so everybody has time to get their thoughts together, to get, everybody knows we're going to have the discussion and be prepared for it. Is that acceptable, Mrs. Donahue?
It is, but we, we have not done evaluations yet. So that might be the first thing we need to do. We, we did a.
Did we not?
We did a minor, minor mention in the goal setting session, but that, that was not a true, the true valuation has very specific.
I remember. We didn't do that?
We, we do not have one of those for this year.
It was an abbreviated one, wasn't it, as I recall? Is that how?
That is typically been the city manager, city clerk, city attorneys evaluation.
Correct. And we didn't do that, at least not in the same depth.
You really had the same questions that you've had for the last three, four years. I mean, that, that process didn't change this year. It didn't get abbreviated this year.
We haven't done it yet.
Well, but within, in that case, we haven't done anything with them. Okay? Because I looked.
Well, we did this, yeah, we did this in March, when we were supposed to have our goal setting and then COVID came in.
Okay. So, but thank you for bringing that up. So how's this? Why don't, why don't I get a chance to gather these? Because I, I was an acting mayor at the time, so I only saw the one that I filled out. Nobody, except you guys, have seen all of them. So why don't I?
I would like to look at the valuation that we had before, compare it with this goal setting evaluation and see if they even compare. If they don't, then we need to go back to the long, involved evaluation.
Okay, okay, I got you.
Take a look at both.
Okay. So thank you for bringing that up. Let me get down here and get, gather the information and get back with you at a future meeting and we'll decide at that point where to go. Is that?
Perfect.
Okay, good. Thanks for bringing that up. So, okay. That's all I had. Any other new business? City manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two things to, again, just brief counsel on what, we've got a couple of things upcoming here. You've been presented with the residential solid waste program. This is basically the information that we will be passing out to the public. I've given it to you guys ahead of time so that we can have some feedback from counsel. See if I've missed anything in here. I think we've done a pretty good job of, again, capturing the essence of the program, but certainly, again, so that we don't give it to you on a Thursday and expect to have a conversation on Tuesday. So if you each would read that, see if there's anything in there that you would like me to add to that presentation. That presentation will be done September 3rd. And again, remember September 3rd, Thursday. Don't forget. One other thing, and again, just a matter of point here. The election date in November falls on our Tuesday. Typically, we have the meeting on Monday when that happens. So if you would put that in your calendars, that we'll be meeting first Monday in, in November and not Tuesday. Second, Mr. Tinch has been able to put together our 2021 Certex project plan. He's going to hand out a copy of this. Again, this is a draft. This has got to be presented to, to the IOC by the end of the, end of the month. We'd like to be able to have you review this. I got one. I got one, okay. Review this, provide some comment back to us. There's a list of projects in there that is a mile long. If you'd like to include some projects in, in the 21's, 21's project plan, please let us know. He has scheduled a couple million dollars worth of work. But certainly, we're still in a standstill with all this. We really, we haven't been able to spend this year's money. We really don't know what's going on. But in order to continue receiving money, the IOC is asking for 21's plan. Remember, they work off a calendar year, not fiscal year. So it gets a little overlap sometimes. But certainly, if you guys would take a look at this, if you've got any questions, please get back with us so that we can update this and do a presentation to counsel at next meeting as well. So.
So this will come before us at one of our meetings as an agenda item for approval, prior to being transmitted to the IOC?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have to have, council needs to approve it before we take it to IOC for their blessing.
Okay, very good.
And remember, we really, they don't, we don't need their approval, but we do need to present the plan. So.
Okay. So when this is placed on the agenda, it'll be available to the public to look at before we?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Very good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll post this on the website before the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll try our best to get, get out there to everybody. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. I had a question. I, I don't want to catch anybody off guard, but would you send us, or maybe give us a, a brief update at our next meeting? Just a brief update on what's going on with parcel B, the Just Breaks building? I get a lot of questions in the community about what's going on. That project just seems to have stalled. Could you have Mr. Polly give us a, just a quick update? It might be better rather than an email if you do it at the meeting so the public can hear.
Are you talking about the old Just Breaks building?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I can give you an update right now, if you care, if you.
Okay.
We've been contacted. That gentleman, Mr. Singh, believe it or not, has been stuck in Trinidad because of COVID. He has not been able to get out of the country. We have been communicating with his engineer and trading site plans back and forth. We are working on a site plan for that building. He still has some interest in buying the other parcel, the old Indian restaurant. But we are moving slowly, slower than I would ever imagine. But we're, we're, every month, we're making a little bit of headway. If I can get him to quit changing his site plan, because he comes up with another idea, we probably would be in a lot better shape. But we are, we are still working with the, his engineer, who is here local, and, and having conversations with him on, on Zoom and, and go-to meetings and stuff like that. So we are.
Sounds like that's the same exact place we were at six months or a year ago, though. It doesn't seem like anything has changed. It seems like we had the same thing. We were talking site plan back then, too.
For the longest time, we had, we didn't add and not have any conversations with an engineer. I know he had problems getting engineers and architects for the longest time. So.
Okay. Mr. Schuster, you have something?
Yeah. Where are we in Paragon? Is he, is he still ready to demolish at the end of the month?
Paragon was given a site plan, a site infrastructure plan, application, just today, if I'm not mistaken, today or yesterday.
We said this about, because 10 days ago, this contractor is ready to move forward with a course, and field the application. They didn't send it back to us, but this afternoon, communicate back to the contractor. So we're hoping once we get the application received, in our office, we will issue two permits to demo the existing building and working on the site, prepping the site. So it should happen, I would say, even if it's not a couple of days from now, early next week, get them the permit done, let them move forward with the site.
I'm not sure the public could hear that. So just to repeat that with the public who's watching, is the application for a permit is pending and that building should be demolished within the next few weeks, right?
Yeah, application is pending. I mean, we are waiting for the contractor to return the site and infrastructure application back to us. And then once we get that, we will process the permit, issue the permit, and they will demo the existing Burger King and moving some dirt and prepping the site for all those freestanding buildings. And Chase Bank, we reviewed the building plan. We issued a permit. We are waiting for the site to get under, you know, control. And then Chase will immediately follow through to build their buildings. And we have a plan for Starbucks, again, is under review. So as a matter, just get the site moving and then all those buildings will come together.
Thank you.
Part of, part of what, you want to tell them about the tower? You got plans for the tower?
Yes. A few days ago, we got the fountain feature drawings, too. We received that. We're going to scan it, send it to city manager and also Greg Polly, Business Resolution Manager, to share that information probably with everybody to make sure that is in compliance with what they presented prior, what was approved prior. So it's a good news. Apparently, the site contractor is the same contractor who will work on the fountain feature, too. So getting the site prepped up.
Things are trickling in and he's given us, he's given us a, a Gantt chart of construction. So, I mean, that's.
Yeah, even we received the construction is scheduled, too?
Yeah.
Yes, timetable to build all the.
Hopefully, he holds, he holds true the email that he sent us and, and we move, start moving forward.
Mr. Chalora, you have?
Yeah, thank you for the, the updates. I've asked Mr. Stevenson numerous times about that Just Breaks building because it, this, this delay has gone on way before COVID hit. And I'm not sure what the intent of this individual is, but I would like to ask, you know, and our, the attorney doesn't have the answer now, shouldn't have it, but how does the contract speak to his obligations on how to move forward? Obviously, there was a sales contract, there was an agreement we had in place, because this has gone on too long. And I think at some point, the city has to put this person on notice, saying, hey, it's time, you know, he's stuck in Trinidad. Well, planes are flying, people are coming and going. Telephones work, engineers work. Nowadays, it's all technology. You know, send an email, send a site plane, whatever you want to do. So I don't quite buy the fact that he's stuck in Trinidad. That's great. You know, it, it's, he's being cautious, but he's stalling our redevelopment efforts. And to use that as a line now, and I'm not saying Mr. Stevens using that, I'm talking about the developer. This delay, this stall was way before, you know, COVID really kicked in. They went in, they put a little fence up, they had like two people working there, because I'd go to Stefano's and have lunch and see like little to nothing happening. And it's been like that. It's been real slow process. And that's actually the easiest project because he's going to use the existing shell. But that's had the least amount of activity. Sounds like the corner project's getting ready to take off. The apartments, they're, I mean, they're skyrocketing, they're moving quickly, which is great. But that's hindering, I think, interest in the other projects because it's just, it's, it's just a downer. You look at that and it's depressing. Nothing's happening to it. It looked better before than it does now. He took the old awnings off. Now you see the old Lindsay lumber colors on it, which was pink and green and whatever color it was. So he should have left it the way it was if he's going to do that. And look at it from, you know, if I was the, the landlord of the building where the post office is, I wouldn't be very happy looking at that, trying to lease my building out. That's pretty ugly. It's pretty nasty. So we, I think at some point, the city has to put this, this guy on notice, saying, hey, you're way beyond your time limit, your site plan, whatever it may be. But, you know, got to, at some point, squeeze a little bit, make something happen.
There, there, in our contracts, there were generally development plans included as part of it. And, and in fact, I know that Mr. Stevenson helped one of our purchasers with his development, you know, have a development plan because the purchaser was not coming up with one himself. On this one, there should also have been a development plan with some sort of a schedule attached to it. So if that's what you'd like, then I'm, we'd be happy Mr. Stevenson and I could get together and work on a, some kind of a notice to the current owner now to, to hopefully push him forward with this.
That would be my position, but obviously, there's four of the people up here that can speak for themselves.
I completely agree with Mr. Chalora. In fact, I, I would submit that there are probably code violations all over the place. If the guy's not going to remodel the building, let's cite him for the code. If the guy's not gonna remodel the building, let's cite him for the code violations, if nothing else, and make him at least make it presentable.
Well, Mr. Mayor, my suggestion is you find out what the stipulations of the contract are. You put him on notice to perform. If he doesn't perform at that point, then you start to squeeze as time goes on. Because I want, I mean, I want, I'd like to have a relationship, but we're working together with him. But, you know, enough time has passed now where he needs to get on with the program. He bought the building, bought it at a good price. Make something happen now. So I just want to move things along. That's all I was trying to dig into it for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chalora. Appreciate your expertise in these matters when they come up. I think you understand where we are, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Singh. Okay. We're still on your report.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. City Attorney's report?
I have nothing. Thank you.
You have nothing? Okay. Mr. Schuster?
Any, any word on the Certex?
I, I could ask you the same thing. No word that I've found on the Certex. I even tried to Google the Certex thing to see if anything has even been printed about it.
I've heard of nothing.
And I can't, there's been nothing since the oral arguments that I believe took place in February of this year. So that's, that's pretty much it.
All the attorneys are stuck in Trinidad.
I wish I was in Trinidad.
So nothing else? The only comments, closing comments, I'd, I'd have to make for, really for the public that's not here watching. And that is, these, this virus has made it very difficult for us to have traditional council meetings. We are open to the public, but typically, we get three or four people. I don't know if you can see it on the cameras or not, but we've removed half the chairs or more than half the chairs. So our seating capacity's reduced. And it's been very difficult because I feel like our public comment has been somewhat restricted. A lot of people don't want to come. They, they are worried they're gonna get here and not be able to get in. They don't feel comfortable coming out, so they're watching. But they're not able to provide the same amount of comment that we would probably normally get on these things. So I would like to tell the public, we do have open seats. Now, you do have to have a temperature checked and you have to wear a mask. But we have had open seats at almost every council meeting so far. So there is some room here. There's probably room for, for half of the eight or 10 people in this room right now. Also, you heard previously our discussion about having the ability to call in to provide public comment. We're setting that up, particularly on the issues that we anticipate would draw a lot of public comment. So I, I guess the point of all this is I want to challenge the public to, please be proactive while we're under these restrictions. It's a little more trouble for you, perhaps, to have to call in or email or something like that. But part of this democratic process we work counts on having public comment from you, too. So, so please do your part. Thank you to the faithful remnant that, that shows up and wears their masks every, every couple of weeks. But when we have the sanitation hearing, please call in. Please, please give us your comment. We want to hear. We don't just go through the motions. We want to hear what the public has to say. So please help us to, to keep this form of government working the way it's supposed to work. Is there anything else to come before this council tonight? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.